The last time.
Are we ready via the web as well? And we will, returning from executive session, thank you all very much. Are there any approval or modifications to the agenda? Hearing none, we will continue. We do not have anyone register for public comments. On our agenda, well, some of our students know that's usually Agenda Item 4.1. There's public comments, there's opportunity for board responses. And then Agenda Item 4.3 is usually an update from our student reps. I feel beyond honored that our student reps would take time out of their summer to come see what the board meeting was like. Welcome, welcome. So if you are also willing, we would love a quick introduction. I know we had a little bit last year, but anything that you all would like to say, you're here. We will officially put you on the agenda, officially put you on the agenda moving forward, but feel free.
Well, it's great to be back, maybe. I recognize a lot of places, I'm Grace, and I'm going to be a senior this year. I'm a returning student, or to the rep, it's my third year. And I'm excited to meet the new board members. Yeah, I guess we're just watching and hearing all that.
We use experience, praise the whole.
I'm McCuden Gore, I'm going to be a junior superintendent.
I'm Claire Park, and I'm going to be a staff.
I'm Vera Cohen, and I'm going to be a senior.
You recognize me.
Nice to meet you. Could you repeat your name?
McCuden. McCuden, and you can do it like me.
So looking forward to you all joining us. Thank you again for joining us tonight as well. We will move on to the consent agenda.
I'll move to the consent agenda.
I know there's some items on here that discuss that finance. Chris, anything that you want to highlight?
There's a lot on there, but I really want to highlight 6.5. The Fund for Historically Responsible Text, Dr. Brown. I think, we spoke about this in finance, I think we are one of the only schools in the country to do something like this. It's extremely impressive, and we continue to partner in doing the big things. That's how it happened. And then, this was a, I thought it was an oldie, but we just finalized, if you look at 6.3, $10,000 for, from the Booster Club, for the scoreboard donation. We started this process four years ago, possibly, and we're finalizing the transaction. We live in a great community, and folks continue to raise money and mobilize on behalf of the district. So it's good to see that come to fruition. And then, sorry, and then the rest are just just financial transfers that happen at different times of the year. We will be discussing in the upcoming future just some expenses regarding lunch and fees and things of that nature, but more dialogue will come back.
Additional questions? Dialogue?
Well, dialogue, which scoreboard is this?
If you haven't, once you see it, you'll know.
I saw the football one and the basketball one, there's a new scoreboard.
The football.
Okay.
Right, folks that have not been by Morestco Stadium, you will know the new scoreboard moves.
Understate.
Yes. Very understated. I also say that folks that have had a chance to take a look at it, we have a long personnel report. It's close to 15 pages of various things. I imagine we'll have some conversation about that a little bit later, but it's worth noting. With no other questions or comments, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on from the consent agenda. Next, we have the superintendent's report. Dr. Brown, the floor is yours.
Sure, Professor, thank you for the opportunity. I'm going to invite some friends of mine to the table, who'll talk about HR issues in a second. But in the meantime, just a special shout out and thank you to our administrative team. We've been in two days of retreat, the last two days, or advancing, I guess you want to call it now. And just, you know, the level of thinking and joy that was shared with all was just fun. It was good to be in person with everyone again, and to be an administrative team, to get to know one another and to learn. And that's what we're planning to do someday. I also want to tell you, shout out, invite Mr. Talcott, I see Black, this is the room, and Bob and Karen up. To talk about what is an issue that's plaguing our industry, education as an industry, staffing. And each year, at this time, at this meeting, we talk about where we are with regards to staffing at schools. As we head into the beginning of the school year, this year, like other years, it's always a challenge. But, you know, in the midst, after, post-pandemic, if I can say that, it's been an increasing challenge for school districts. And I've been talking to colleagues all around the region and the state, and no one is immune to this particular issue. But I would love to give our community an update on where we are, with hopes that we can provide another update when we come back together again. So y'all want to come up and just talk, you might have specific numbers, but as close as we can about where we are with transportation, teachers, professional, et cetera. I was trying to drag it out for a long time, with hopes that y'all would walk up here by this time. Thank you all.
Dr. Brown.
Yeah.
Board members, for each of you, everybody, for the public, those who don't know me, I'm Lily Talcott, I get to serve as the deputy superintendent. I just want to do a little bit of framing around staffing. Many of us receive the New York School Boards Association, the MIB Eclipse, right, where they pull all of the education articles throughout the state, and they send you the feed of every education article around New York State, they're online that day, right? And each day, I read through those, and each day, I see we are not alone, right, in terms of staffing challenges. As Dr. Brown said, that, you know, this is a, this is an issue that is plaguing our industry. I read an article not that long ago, talking about the number of educators, that's really across the entire spectrum, right? So we're talking teacher aides, teachers, principals, superintendents, who are considering leaving the profession, right, and in high numbers. And then, just last night, or I think this morning, I texted both of you, another article, again, about a local district that's not too far away, that typically folks really flock to. That's certainly struggling as well. So we're working really hard, I can guarantee you that we're working really hard to make sure that we have wonderful people for our kids to get to work with. And we also know that this is a big issue, and so we're trying to get really creative. We do have some good news as well, right? It's not, it's not all perfect, and yet, there is, there are some ways that we're moving forward that I feel good about.
Yeah, yeah, and we'll intersperse better news, good news and better news. And I think, I'm going to start with special ed, because that's an area where we typically, I think all districts across the nation, in fact, are having funding, special ed, teachers. And I'm gonna, I'm not going to be tricky with the wording, but there's some nuance that we kind of have to understand. There are currently six special ed vacancies. We don't have a body in for them yet. There are 10 other vacancies we have covered through various means. So folks will say there are 16, some folks will say there's 16 vacancies in special ed. Technically, that's true. We've covered 10 of those 16. I'm just, I'm not going to go down building by building, but I want to give you a flavor of how we've covered those 10. And I think I can do it just by reading. One, for instance, is covered with an uncertified teacher. One is covered with a teaching assistant, but there's additional information I think is relevant. That TA taught for 10 years out of state, in private and charter schools. So they have teaching experience, they're just not certified in New York State, for example. One is being covered by a TA, but they're in a special ed teacher program, and they'll be done at the end of this school year. So, again, they're close, you know, they're working on their special ed certification, and by the end of this school year, they'll be done with that. One is being covered by a certified math teacher. They're not certified in special ed, but that particular person is in a special ed program. They'll be done with that at the end of next summer. One is being covered with a retired general ed teacher. And that teacher, who's gen ed, is being supplemented one day a week by a retired special ed teacher who's going in and co-teaching and helping collaborate and plan for the year. Two vacancies, I have been naming the school, IHS, at the high school, are being covered by overages. And what that is, is the full-time equivalency is split between the remaining special ed teachers. By ITA contract, they get what amounts to 16.7% praise for doing that. It's not something that either ITA or the district would say people would like doing, because there is, you know, the burnout factor, it's not easy work. But we have negotiated the contract, that's what they did for that, and that's how it's being done at the high school. One is being covered by a certified social worker, another is being covered by retired gen ed. Actually, two more are being covered by retired gen ed teachers. So, if you look at just the technical vacancies, 16, not where we want to be. But 10 of those, currently, we have, I think, pretty good coverages for. And the other six, we have interviews coming up next Thursday, and again, hoping to get some good folks in there as well. For all of those that are being covered by other than certified special ed teachers, the postings will remain up. We have an obligation under New York State ed law to continue searching good faith for certified special ed teachers, and we'll do that. And as soon as we find them, whether it's September 5th, or October 5th, or November 5th, they will start to go and fill in those positions. And I know Dan has some good news around transportation in particular.
Could I just ask just one point of information on special ed? Our consent agenda approved seven special ed positions tonight, like people to fill them. I think five were regular and two were long-term sub. Were those part of the 16 that you were counting? Or are there, or are there, or are there, were there 16 additional positions on top of these seven? Or like, of which 10 you have filled in some way?
Hey, I'm really embarrassed you asked me a question that I didn't prepare for. I can look at that, because I pulled without names, I didn't want names associated with what I was going over.
Oh, sure, sure.
So let me do a quick check.
Okay.
My guess is that included the desires.
We can get back to this after.
And I would ask, maybe after we finish hearing, and then we'll hold our questions. And also, for me, know that some of this, we're going to have to have conversations at an HR committee meeting next Tuesday, that some of this may be the best place for this as well, but.
I just wanted to follow, since you were talking about teachers, so I have secondary updates. And first, I want to say, I am excited for the teachers that are joining us this year. I mean, it daunts me every day, the national shortage. I think there was, you know, great momentum with job fairs being, some of the job fairs being in person. There were still jobs fairs that were virtual. You know, the number of students that are actually graduating from programs. But I am, I am excited about our new teachers that are joining. I also want to mention, you know, the bureaucracy of becoming New York State certified, and the process that that takes. You know, I talked to our regional certification officer, Loretta Waldron, who is awesome. She's the only person working out of OC and Bosse's right now, and just like, helping us so much with our employees and even with those that are graduating from SUNY schools. You know, it's like following the process to get certified. So that, that's an element of it, which, you know, is aside from the actual shortage. Right now, with secondary, we have, we're still needing to hire family consumer science. Oh, she did. Just accepted. No, we don't need that, yeah. We have two English positions, secondary, reading. We have three special ed, or, I don't want to talk about that. Also math position, and a PE, which recently became vacant. And we actually just had two certified people apply yesterday and today, so we're on that, hopefully to be able to fill that.
For transition to transportation, also, be remiss not to mention that due to the incredible support of the board and the community, and our commitment to inclusion, we've added 10 special education positions in the last two years. Right, so we have more co-teaching experiences for our young people, and frankly, for educators having been in co-teaching relationships. It's incredibly rewarding, and it allows us to support kids in different ways. So I think it is just important for us to remember that piece as well. And to celebrate it.
And for transportation, I just want to thank Glidira. Glidira's been an amazing partner for working with recruitment, with radio ads, with, through word of mouth, through all the job fairs we've gone to for the community partnerships. It's really been great to work with you and HR, so thank you. Yeah, thank you, I want to publicly acknowledge all the work that you're doing, so thank you. So we're in much better shape in transportation than we were last year at this time. We have 65 drivers currently, and what's even more exciting is how many trainees we have. We have, we have 16 trainees right now, who are at different stages of getting their license. On the next, at the next board meeting, we'll have more. So we also have eight office staff mechanics that can back up. That they have, they have their CDLs, and they can back up if there's any absences. We have six that recently passed the road test, so they'll be on the road probably in about six weeks, which is exciting. And then others at varying levels. Even more exciting is, because we've added more people, we have more trainees, we've added four additional routes, or five, I'm sorry. Two for LACS, and some other routes that will support some of the needs that we've heard. In the next board meeting, we're excited, we weren't able to get a few drivers on the board report, just because we just met them the other day. But we found, we've, we have connected with a few drivers who have their CDLs. So at the next report, we'll put them on there, and they'll be able to get on the road almost immediately. That's, that's super exciting for us as well. Custodial also has, we're really excited, because on the board report, there's custodians, we're down to six vacancies, which is pretty, pretty amazing for us with 53 positions. So. Yeah, I just wanted to mention Yeah. that the outgoing union president and the incoming union president of the employees' association, together with their executive team, which is a little changeover. Again, in another meeting that we had, talked about these numbers, and how effective the contract that you all, most of the, most of the board members who are here entered into them, and their appreciation of the negotiation process and the whole of the contract. So they have said it has helped tremendously in terms of recruitment, especially with bus drivers, so nice job. Thank you. For custodial, almost all, I'd say our elementaries are fully staffed. We have one vacancy, and the person on the board report will hopefully cover that vacancy. And the other, the other vacancies we have are more second shift and rover positions, night positions. But we'll be working on filling those as well. What's exciting about, what's exciting about this is we haven't been up to this level in quite some time. So we're closing in. What's really been helpful has been word of mouth and the drop-ins that we do every Thursday from 1:00 to 4:00. Just the other week, we had two, and we hired two. We went two for two. That was exciting.
So two things. One, I know we have recently added a couple of special meetings, anticipating that we'll have additional board reports with personnel. One will be on Wednesday, August 31st, at 5:00 PM, virtual, just only a virtual meeting for personnel reports. Then we'll be on Tuesday, September 6th, at 6:15, between Policy and HR Committee, to again, hopefully, be looking at additional personnel reports. I know this part of the agenda is actually the superintendent's report, so I'm going to turn it back over to you before the C3, our colleagues may have any questions.
That's all the content we wanted to share, yeah, so any questions?
Any questions for our board colleagues, and again, reminded that we'll have HR Committee next Tuesday as well, two Tuesdays, I apologize.
Maybe this is for HR, so Chris, tell me, who's relevant, is that?
Well, we haven't had our first meeting yet.
So.
Who you point?
I'm going to say it, but it's rhetorical, answer in HR. So recruitment is one thing, retention is another. We know the talent, the competence for talent in this country, pre-dates have been there. We're just feeling it now, because of our special circumstances in your industry, in this, our industry. But keeping these, once we bring them on board, is going to be equally challenging, if folks are doing double duty, let's say, if not double shift. Especially if folks aren't certified, you know, those are vulnerable. I'm wondering if we've gone out of our way to do anything special to compete against our neighbors, private districts, we have people who choose us. We started having this conversation in finance, it's going to spread out to HR, a lot of this is going to have to be in the debt for obvious reasons with our union colleagues, but my sense is it's time for us to think different. Not differently about how we are running this work. So I just want to say that, and we'll all, I'll be thinking about as well, answer in committee.
Right, and I'll add to what Eldridge's question is, and I think it is a phenomenal committee question. We do need to talk about retention, not just the folks we currently hired, but the folks that we have who are phenomenal. And I'm also aware that there have been a lot of districts who have been asked to put people in positions that are outside of their certification. And so part of retention, for me, would be the amount of support that we provide for folks, and what that looks like. And so I don't think it's a question that we have to answer on the spot. I think, you know, I'm sure there's conversations that are already happening, but if the board can be made aware of what those retention efforts are, either at HR or next board meeting, that would be, I think that would be essential for us as well.
William Glidira, help me out. So you folks did a very substantial presentation not that long ago, about the supports that are in place, that was all about retention. Was that just for the HR Committee?
Yeah.
Okay, so I think the full board needs that, because we've heard it in HR. I probably could find my notes, right?
Well, and a recommendation for us to add that to our next agenda, we'll talk with, the board office will connect, we'll connect with our board colleagues, and that could be, that should be an agenda item, item 4.1.
Thank you.
That would move us on to school business, and our first agenda item is project innovation presentation with Mary.
Mary Groban, yeah, you're welcome.
16 is counted in that. Okay. It's lovely to be here. Thank you so much for your support and dedication to students in the summer. It has been highlighted my summer to be at summer programming, engaging with students during professional development. Trish, if you don't mind the next slide, I just want to start by saying, summer programming, we have one in four students in our district engaged in summer programming this year. That project innovation has expanded substantially. And the very dedicated principal, Julie Humble of Project Innovation, will speak to that in a moment. But attending some of the professional development around reading alongside students who are also receiving personalized reading support, so teachers can use some of the materials they hope to use during the school year in the summer. The Summer Academy at Ithaca High School was a credit recovery model that supported students being able to enter this fall with courses completed. We also had the Caroline Wilderness Performance Academy, some of you attended that performance, and that's a delight. Students spend three weeks engaged in acting and getting to know themselves as readers, writers, thinkers, scientists, and then it culminates with an outdoor performance. And all of these experiences, and we also had the Bosse's Regional Summer School, and sending some students there. And I think that as we're engaging and expanding the summer programming, I wanted to speak, Chris, to the, some of our community partnerships that have really helped that. The culturally responsible texts, and partnering with some local authors, we have students writing books and publishing them that will be decodable, high-interest texts, as well as students working as reading buddies in the project innovation this summer. We'll talk a little bit more about those two programs. So Julie, I'll pass it to you to talk specifically about project innovation.
Great. Good evening, I'm Julie Humble, for those of you who don't know me. The past three years, I was at Beverly J. Martin as the associate principal. Next year, I'll be moving to Northeast as the associate principal. And for the past two summers, I have been at Project Innovation, which I absolutely love. And it is a real joy to build the program and hire the teachers, because they are people who really enjoy teaching, and one of you have kids during the summertime. This year, we had over 350 applicants for Project Innovation. We hired 19 teachers, so we had fully co-taught inclusive classrooms. We were able to hire gen ed and a special ed teacher for each one. I think that this year, it was a bit more, bit more reason to celebrate as we were, you know, getting back to the way that we could do things, and people could participate in the program in different ways, and we could do field trips again, and we could really connect with our community partners. A lot of teachers took advantage of that and partnered with the Ithaca Children's Garden, the Learning Farm, Cornell Cooperative Extension, and then the middle school partnered with Circus Culture. They were able to extend the activities from the projects that they created in their classroom. Each classroom had full autonomy to take their projects in any direction that the students wanted them to go. I think, I, last year from this year, what I really appreciated was that a lot of the classrooms did the work around their students, and last year, a lot of the grade levels had like teamed up together. So this year, it was really student-driven, based on the kids in the classroom. And I just wanted to share some of the different things that the kids worked on. We had a classroom who built a brand-new outdoor classroom for the chess community. So they now have this beautiful outdoor classroom. Hydroponics and the future of farming, solar and renewable energy, food and how it feeds the body, the human body and how it works, how nature helps us solve problems, identity, culture, and social changes. One classroom built a buddy bench that will be delivered to Fall Creek for that school to use. So, and at the end, classrooms also had the autonomy to decide how they wanted to celebrate. So each classroom celebrated in a different way, and then we just put a schedule together. So we had museum hallway walks, we had performances, we had information tables, and some kids just displayed the art that they had made. So it was done in different ways, and everybody was invited to view it and participate in it. And some of the feedback that we got from the teachers was it was one of the best summers that they had had at Project Innovation.
Well, I want to make sure that we extend a lot of gratitude
Oh, yes.
to bus drivers. This required a number of bus drivers. Custodial staff. Mr. Dave at Cuba Heights, you walk in and he smiles, he said, "I just love having kids here." And I know that it pinches what he's going, his timeline for what he's going to be able to communicate, get ready for September. Also, food service. Facilities, one day we needed the crusher run for the students outside and building that outdoor classroom. We called facilities, it was there the next day. So, and they were very happy to do it. It was really, I was really grateful. And you might be asking, wow, how can we expand it? And thanks to, so part of the expansion is thanks to, of course, our community support and also the Project Innovation Cultivating Connection Grant, which the news story is thanks to our communications teams up on the website. To read more about that grant, which is $420,000 a year for the next five years. And that affords us a lot of flexibility and support to give teachers, to pay them for planning time, materials for the classroom that they can also use in their classroom during the school year. And that's been.
Yeah, I think so. Also, we did the Culturally Responsible Texts. We had, that they could anchor towards their projects this year, which was new. So they were really excited about that as well, being able to do that through the grant.
So the last piece before we take the questions, I wanted to give a shout-out and shine bright on Brooke Burnett, who mentored eight reading buddies from the high school. These young people came to Project Innovation every day and supported reading instruction in the kindergarten and first and second and third grade classrooms. So the classrooms were multi-age, K-1, 2, 3, 4, 5, from school. And that is really joyful to watch high schoolers who are very much committed to their own education and getting to know themselves as readers and writers and sharing that with. And mentoring younger students was beautiful. So we invite you to come see it next summer. We're excited and grateful really to Cuba Heights Elementary, so I'll be successful there for hosting the program and the school.
I see questions, so.
Yeah, questions.
I want you to my colleagues.
I don't really have a question, I just want to, I want to say thank you. All three of my kids attended. My seven-year-old daughter would come home talking about muscular skeletal systems and just totally geeking out, and I loved it. And I also have to say kudos to the transportation, bus driver and always kind, so patient, so understanding. Just, it was a great experience for my children, so thank you.
Great, thank you very much, and thank you for the presentation. Was it only held at Cuba Heights or were there other schools that held this program?
That's a great question. So, and it, it's nuanced. So our hope is, as thanks to this grant, that it will always be at one school for the morning time, but that we can partner with homeschools and students can be bused. So Enfield piloted for two weeks, Enfield students had the option of continuing the programming. The programming is 8:00 to noon at Cuba Heights, and then students were bused to Enfield and continued some work in their gardens at Enfield. So it also extended the day for high-quality programming for kids and families. So we've had it at the past, in the past, at Bell Sherman Elementary School. You know, we were working around capital projects and also acknowledging the size. So initially, we had thought we would do it at Fall Creek, and we had to pivot because Fall Creek just wasn't big enough for you to do anything else. But it is open to all, create ICSD students.
But there was a portion also held at Caroline because their world-class program. So then, so two to three school openings were moved throughout the summer.
Yes, Fall Creek became, housed the pre-K program, the summer program. In high school.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, really, really, our custodial staff is really pretty fantastic navigating around all these people during the summer months.
I know several of us visited different programs this summer. I made it up to see this one with Julie and made it to see little babies down at Fall Creek with Deborah. And I went to the high school. It was, I think you said it best, I wasn't expecting to see the teachers I saw. These are people who were grounded in this community for a very long time, teaching very hard work. And there were some great things happening with us. I was blown away, it was really, really cool, so thank you. Julie, for you, the fidelity with which you were managing that was just, I just had to say that in words. So thank you for taking that on during the summertime. And I'd like to think with the grant, we'd get more teachers interested, say, realize the quality of the program. Maybe we'd get more of the college bench.
I want to say that I was planning to go to the Caroline Wilderness Performance Academy when it was on a Thursday, and I worked from home, and then they had a rain date, and then I had obligations at work on the Friday, so if I missed it. I just want to ask you a question about the Algebra Companion Course because, of course, we were just in curriculum and talking about the new middle school math program. So I'm wondering where the Algebra Companion Course fits into the math sequence and like, you know, where in the process and who was, who was in it, what, not like names, but what types of kids were in it this semester and over the summer and what their goals were.
Great question. So kids get to choose with their families if they want to take that additional content in the summer or at an earlier period during the school year or during the school day. So there's multiple options. And the teachers who are teaching the math course at Point Inn and Duett support that companion course this summer. I don't have the exact number. 16 kids take it this summer. We ended up having three different teachers who took two-week chunks and communicated with each other on the relationship to how the students. And then, then in terms of the sequence, so for those students, they now will take algebra in eighth grade, right? So they already, they had that companion course, so they had some of the eighth-grade standards, both standards for, the content standards, right, and the standards for mathematical practice. So they have experience with those so that as they begin algebra, they have some of that prerequisite knowledge and you're making sure that we're not, we're filling in some of the gaps that would have been created by simply skipping that grade level content.
Oh, good, thank you.
Sure.
So I'm curious about the Bosse's Summer School. So how many of our kids go there, and what kind of program is involved at that?
Yeah, that's a really great question. So our summer programming through Project Innovation is inclusive and integrated and project-based programming. That's at the heart of it, that if we're going to provide these rich co-teaching experiences for children during the school year, we want to, and they have a right to have that in the summer as well. And for Bosse's regional school, what we found is where, or the reality, the students who attend Bosse's during the school year have access to that programming in the summer for their IP. And so the number of students is, has decreased significantly since we sent to Bosse's Summer School.
Additional questions, comments? I will add just my thanks as well. I got to see a little bit of it, and it is amazing, so thank you, and to the team that you work with, and to our students. Good stuff.
Oh, and the teachers really just phenomenal, phenomenal, thank you.
Thank you, all great. We will transition to Agenda Item 11.2, which is a discussion about virtual participation protocols and hybrid meetings. Just to provide some context where this comes from, on January, not January, wrong month, on June 28th or 26th, I want to say, the board passed a resolution that outlines participation in a virtual form for school board members. We will continue to livestream all of our board meetings, no matter what. And then the Governor Haco came out with an extension of the state of emergency, which said we no longer need to have an in-person quorum to hold our meetings, we can go hybrid. That executive order was to run through August 13th, and then on August 13th, there was an extension of that executive order to September 12th. We probably anticipate that on September 12th will be another extension of that executive order. And so part of our conversation was just a dialogue as a board. We know for the next two months, at the very least, we have the option of holding hybrid meetings. But if we go back to what was proposed prior to this, there is the real potential that we will need in-person quorums to host our board meeting and how we engage in that, and what does it look like for any of us who are unable to attend the meeting or that have to attend virtually, that we want to have some clarity about what the process was. The resolution was sort of standard legalese. It was sort of a platform, a template that was used from other school districts. The meeting that this was passed, I believe there was only five board members present, I was not. So we wanted to make sure that all of our board had an opportunity to see what the protocols were, to discuss what the process looked like, to have a conversation of things that we felt like we needed change or needed to extend or needed to expand, whatever it may be. So that's the reason why that is on the agenda for this meeting. Moore, I don't know if you want to add anything to that conversation?
Well, I mean, the resolution that we passed, which was guided very much by what we were told by the state that if we chose a school district had the option to pass a resolution to allow hybrid meetings, or they could choose to not allow hybrid meetings. And we ultimately passed the resolution, which included particular parameters that were included in the guidance we got from the state. One of which, Sean just mentioned, that there had to be an in-person quorum. Another was there had to be a significant reason for a board member to participate virtually. Another was that the board member had to keep their cameras on at all times, that their equipment needed to be functioning efficiently, that, you know, if there, there was too much lag or dropping of it, that they couldn't participate that way. Anything else you remember from that, or you've got it in front of you?
Yeah, I do, and folks can take a look at it and read it. There was, there's nothing for us to vote on other than to make sure that everyone's been made aware. And if there are things that we want, again, to change or to tweak, that we have the opportunity and the option to do so.
But we also, at least as I understand it, what we want to talk about now, between now and as long as the extension of the emergency is in place, we want to, I think we want to talk about, we don't have to have a quorum on other other aspects that were in the resolution or that weren't, that we want to talk about, that we want to have in place if we're going to have some people participating virtually. If that makes sense.
Questions, comments, concerns, suggestions?
I would add one thing with, with the resolution, which is I think the cameras should be on at all times, but I think there should be a line in there with the exception of the operating circumstances. As in, a lot of us have our families there, and we might need to turn the camera off, right, per minute or two or more. So if there's a way to work that into the writing, I think that's really important.
At all times with the majority of the meeting, something like, like anything like that?
Yeah, but the phrase "at all times" did come from the state. So are we, I really don't know, are we a liberty to make, take adjustments to?
We are absolutely open to make whatever adjustments we want and then run it by our legal team to see what it gives. But we can change the language and capture it in whatever way. And we did have some conversation about that, right? I mean, does it preclude someone from using the restroom?
Right, yeah.
Like, of course, there are going to be times when someone's going to turn their camera on. I think the intent was that people are not able to participate without their cameras on, right? That you cannot vote without your camera on, things of that nature. I think that was the idea behind virtual, a new virtual participation, which is different than what we have been doing in a hybrid model as well. Again, this will not go into effect until whenever the governor no longer extends the state of emergency. I have no idea what it's going to be. I know we're all hearing different dates, but at least now I think it will be sometime in September and October. But, so there's one part as well, so yes, the idea about cameras. Any additional? Grace, I see your hand, hold on one second, I'm coming your way. And because Grace is a member of the board, we will reach out and grant an audience, yes, Grace?
Yeah, I'm not sure what's the protocol, it's like, maybe they're not answering questions. So if the executive order doesn't get extended, how will that affect, like, public comment? Will, will they have to, like, comment personally?
That is something that we have discussed and debated and is up for continued conversation.
Well, under the resolution that we passed, and also the state guidance or order was, if we, if we pass a resolution to allow for hybrid meetings, that had to include the public. And if, it couldn't just be board members. So if we were going to allow the public to participate virtually, then we had to allow board members to participate virtually under particular.
Extenuating circumstances.
Right, and, and there had to be a quorum and all of that. So if we continue, unless we rescind this resolution, when we're no longer in the state of emergency, the public would continue to, and they're, they're, they can participate now, and unless we decide we don't want to have hybrid meetings, then they will participate, they will be able to participate for them.
And Grace, I apologize, yesterday was the first day of classes, so I'm in professor mode and giving too much information, but I don't. And the response is yes, folks are able to participate. And we have received a number of community requests to make that happen. We are greatly aware of the hardship, not only serving on the board, but for any parent, community member, student who wants to speak to the board, and what that means to have to be here. As a matter of fact, we are engaging in conversations about changing our agenda where everyone knows that public comment will be at a particular time where we don't have to guess. knows that public comment will be at a particular time where we don't have to guess, right? So we're trying to pay attention to all of these requests about how to make dialogue and communication easier, even while board meetings are not designed to answer people's questions in the moment. Is that?
Yes, thank you.
Did I, did I not answer your question because that was my call? Additional questions, comments from the board?
I'm not going there.
So we will explore the language that Erin has asked, we'll send this back out again, we'll make sure we connect with our legal counsel to see if there's anything that we missed. But again, we wanted to make sure that we had some conversation about what the expectations are. I think more internally, there may be some things we want to dialogue about, like if possible, should we give 24 hours notice? Should we make sure that we have a team that is set up to make this happen as well? It's one thing to have people participate hybrid, it's vastly easier for simply just live streaming, and so it requires different resources as well, so we need to have all those things in place as much as possible.
Oh, I have a question. So at this point, we are having our committee meetings only in person. Are we continuing or is that something we have to decide?
I think we have to decide that, and I think the extension of the executive order tells us that we can and or should go back to hybrid meetings moving forward.
Thank you for bringing that up because I still go on mental autopilot with committee meetings and believing that, so.
Because last year we, it was only virtual.
Correct.
Yeah.
And we know if it's confusing, and that's why when I said the board update, I was saying in-person, virtual, hybrid, right? But I mean, how mu, that's a lot to pay attention to.
Yeah, yeah, I think it benefits everyone if we're consistent, all our meetings should have a hybrid option.
I agree.
So are you guys saying the committee meetings have the same hypothetical rules from the state, that if we decide to let board members go virtual or for the public go virtual, do the board members also go virtual?
The difference with our committee meetings is we normally do not have a quorum. If we were to have a quorum at a committee meeting, then we absolutely would have to follow the regulations of the state.
By a quorum of the board?
Of the board.
Of the board.
If we had five or more board members participating in the committee, we'd have to go hi, we would have to follow what we did here. Since we normally have three board members at each committee meeting, it is up for us to decide, and that's been the request from a number of community members, for us to continue the hybrid option so folks can at least watch or participate in the meetings, even if they're not speaking, they still would like to be able to view the meetings as well. So I, I would be in favor of that as one board member, that that would be our way.
It makes sense. I, I will just say that when we have committee meetings that are held on the same night as board meetings, like the, the curriculum committee meeting today, it's physically impossible to participate virtually and then get here in time for a board meeting. So I, I, it is physically impossible, so it was.
But if you're participating in, in person in the board meeting?
Then you're here.
So will you participate in person for the committee meeting as well? Or I mean, what are the issues there?
If you decide to go virtual, you almost have to leave halfway through.
Well, but some, sometimes in the past, I, I literally have not been able to get out the door to get here for a five o'clock meeting from, from.
Because we're all virtual for meetings.
And so, and so once, you know, when trying to be to participate in a meeting that I couldn't get here to, to here on time, and then get here to participate in a board meeting, which I could get here on time to be in person, I ended up losing like, yeah, almost half the meeting because it takes 20, 25 minutes. So it's, that's just a practical consideration. I, I personally intend to be in person barring a next super variant, which I really hope doesn't happen.
So what I'm hearing folks advocate for is definitely a hybrid model so far, right? Where people who can and or need or for whatever reason will be in person, but there will also maybe times when folks want to join the meeting virtually and then commit those distinctions. I think it is different when we have meetings before a board meeting. Next Tuesday, not next Tuesday, my apologies, September 6th will be policy followed by HR, right? And so those have the potential to be all virtual under our current state of emergency if we so choose so. And we should let that be known to the community quick, as soon as possible. So let's make that determination now if that works for folks.
I like that option. That I support.
Any other feedback, comments? So what that does not preclude, for example, policy, it's Pat, Moore and myself, if we wanted to be in person, we could, but it would have to include a hybrid model, so we'd have to work with Tricia to make sure that it still be streamed, right? Is that all right? If that worked for folks, then?
So, and even if all three of us were going to be there, we would provide an opportunity for public to participate virtually.
Yes. And the same thing for HR, which starts at 6:30. All right.
Only, curriculum is slightly different.
One more time, open, I'm sorry.
As I say, curriculum is slightly different, Sean, than that we spend, we intend to inhabit a pass, spend a significant amount of time out there in classrooms, discussing things with teachers, watching students in action. And it's, it has been and can continue to be awkward if people are participating in that meeting and they don't have that experience, or they haven't gone there, they haven't been with us on the road, so to speak. This will be interesting. My inclination is not going to be to spend a normal amount of time summarizing those experiences with people who weren't able to do that, right? And deal with questions that, and deal with questions, let's just say that. That's not to be mean, but.
But those, when you do that, Eldred, those times are not at five, right? Because school is out. So that would mean that the curriculum meeting would be elsewhere.
Curriculum meetings don't happen during our, those instructional rounds don't happen during the curriculum meeting.
So the instructional rounds wouldn't be able to be hybrid, they would be in person, is what you're saying?
Exactly. What I'm saying is when we come back to discuss those, because that's always a part two, right? We come back and debriefly discuss it and, and it's, it's challenging to have people intelligently and in a useful way participate in those conversations.
Right.
If they have not been with us on the road, so to speak. That makes sense.
Right.
So it's just something else for us to discuss.
My quick interjection would be that this is a topic for us to have during next Tuesday's board development session, about board expectations, about responsibilities, in addition to other board development work that we're going to be doing. I think that's an appropriate time to have that conversation. And so the community knows, I know we've already made it public, but we are holding a board development session for the board and the board only next Tuesday, August 30. So if that works for you, we'll make sure that that gets on the agenda. All right. If there's nothing else, we'll keep moving forward. Next on the agenda is the TST BOCES delegate, and I want to be very clear, Moore and I had extensive conversation about this today. This is designating a delegate to serve on the TST BOCES Executive Committee. We already have a representative from the EFCity School District that serves on the TST BOCES Board of Education, so this is not that role.
This is, and it's, there's been a lot of confusion about this role. Pat did it for a number of years, I did it for a number of years, Eldred did it for the last two years. It's a group that meets once a month, and when we were in person and returned to in person, it was a lunch meeting up at BOCES. And it, there's a representative from each of the component districts, and Jeff Madison, the superintendent of BOCES, would fill us in on what was happening at BOCES. The delegates from each of the component districts would, you know, report on what's going on in their districts. We, we would have folks take turns making a presentation about something particular that was going on, some initiative, some program in their district. We never decided anything except who we wanted to give an award to, I think. You know, there was no voting on anything, there was no decision-making that happened. So, you know, it's, that's what it was. Now, what Sean filled me in on today, which I had no recollection of, for reasons that I don't understand, in the past, we have voted for the person to do this. My memory was, it was similar to other community organization liaisons where somebody said, yeah, I'm interested in that, and, and they got, we, we kind of agreed, oh, okay, you can do that one. But apparently, we actually voted on it.
For the past six years, it has been part of reorganization meetings.
Okay.
And the language of the resolution is as on your agenda, that we have voted as a board to designate, to nominate and or designate a board member to serve that task. So at this time, I will entertain, or we will entertain any motions to move this forward.
So point of, point of information, because at that last meeting, when this was on the agenda, I had not gotten access to the different assignments and liaison assignments, and Jill was on as a, as TST BOCES, so that was the other one that is not the monthly one?
No, that's, that's the monthly one. And that's, we, I mean, this, again, there's been confusion. When Sean and I did the committee and liaison assignment, we took people's preferences and what they indicated, and one of the slots was this delegate to the TST BOCES Executive Committee. And so we just put Jill in there. And now we're recognizing, for reasons I'm not entirely clear, that we're supposed to vote on this.
Whether we're supposed to vote on it is not the case.
Case, it's.
We have voted on it historically.
In the past.
And that's right, and that's because of that.
And let me say that, as it's now explained, it isn't at all what I was interested in doing.
Oh, yay!
Let me remove myself from any further.
Well, Jill, let me also just say, not to you, but to the community, you also have taken on an excessive amount of responsibility in the first.
And I would have been happy to visit BOCES, as I will visit Caroline and all great, but, and yeah, but, yeah, but this doesn't interest me as much.
I, I understand. So with it again, entertaining motions to move this forward.
And also for anybody else, for Moore, another thing that happens at this meeting is that the, the executive director of the Central New York School Boards Association always attends, and he brings us up to date on what's happening at the state level. The New York State School Boards Association.
Regional rep.
Regional rep also attends these meetings, and she gives a report about what's happening with NISBA and, and what's happening at the state. So that's awesome. Eldred or Pat, can you recall other things that happened at these meetings?
You can get a report out when it's time for liaison reports in the interim, let's talk about who's going to be in that role. Do we entertain any?
Well, I'm, I'm saying this so that people who know what the role is.
I, I completely understand and appreciate that.
I'd like to nominate someone for this role, someone who's done a fabulous job in this role for the last two years and has expressed interest in continuing. And I'm looking at him right now.
Does that person have a name?
His name is Eldred.
And, you know, two weeks ago, he volunteered.
He did, he, he was excited about it, in fact.
Oh, at the last meeting, yes.
So Chris, did I hear what you said?
Second.
Any other discussion or questions?
I, I had a, I had a question.
Yes, please.
Question that, especially since we heard from Project Innovation that the BOCES regional summer program numbers was a bit low or lower than, was it, yeah.
Yeah, just as a result of starting our own program, kids who might have gone there now come here.
But I'd like to see our district more engaged with BOCES and not to, I know it would be a paradigm shift for several educators and workers within the school district to not say that school as if it's negative, but for us to encourage our students, because BOCES has some excellent programs, that even if you're, whether you're career or your college, they have excellent programs, and we as a district need to start utilizing those programs, because other districts within the community are utilizing it. So we're not just going there as a representative and a delegate to just save face and represent, but truly represent and try to engage our high school, LCS and all other participants in BOCES.
Additional comments?
We, yeah, we do have, how many, how many of our students are attending BOCES? 130 something, 100? What, what was that?
175 across all areas during this year.
Now, we're talking about.
CTE all the way to Turning Point.
Okay, that, totally.
A quick response, Karen, this is something that we've been discussing for quite some time, particularly in curriculum as well, and so there is significant support to make sure that we utilize resources, especially as the largest district that is represented at TST BOCES as well. So yes, we'll make that happen. So unless there are any other questions or comments, all in favor? Passes unanimously, fantastic. Item, agenda item 11.4, resolution to attend NISBA 2022 Board Officers Academy Workshop.
Moore wants to go, is that right?
Yes, it's, it's for, basically board officers training.
I, I, I moved to approve this agenda, just from Moore Lang, to attend the fostering unity through collaborative learning leadership training on September 23rd, 2022 in Rochester, New York.
Second.
Is this a sub-meeting of the general meeting?
No, this is a training for me to learn about being a, a, a board officer essentially.
Like, I'm just asking, is it part of the NISBA session we already signed up, or is it something separate on the separate?
No, yes, it's separate. It's a one-day workshop in Rochester.
Board officers should have training.
Oh, that's right, the other one's in here.
That's the conference, that would happen in that. Any additional questions? All in favor? Passes unanimously, thank you very much. Item agenda 11.5, resolution to attend NISBA District Clerk Workshop.
I moved to approve the expenditure for Tricia Berisford to attend the 2022 live virtual district clerk workshop on October 6th, 2022.
Second. Somebody explain what live virtual.
I know, I get what you're doing. The presenters are, it's not recorded.
It's in, it's real time. Yeah, your, your participation, it's any Zoom, it's a Zoom meeting, yes.
Additional questions or comments? All in favor? Passes unanimously, thank you very much. Then moves us to agenda item 11.6, discussion of the board vacancy. For context, I remind our community that the school board has one of three options when there is a board vacancy. There can be the hosting of a special election, there can be an appointment of a board member by the board, or the seat can remain vacant. Those are the three options that we have. Under special circumstances, if the board does choose to leave the seat vacant, the commissioner of education could force us to appoint somebody or force the board or to command the board to appoint somebody, but that has not happened, then I'm aware of in quite some time. So the three options on the table again are a special election, appoints a board member or leave the seat vacant. And we are here to have a conversation about how best to proceed.
So that was three and a half.
That was the half, the half is that someone else would appoint for us.
Or?
The district commissioner, superintendent. So if the commissioner were to require us to appoint a board member, that would be from our TST BOCES, our district superintendent, Dr. Madison.
I just wanted that clear, sorry.
Yep, no, appreciate that, thank you very much. I'll say again, the floor is open, there's no set conversation.
And have we shared with the public the cost if we were to have a special election?
A special election would cost about $60,000, normally probably about 80, closer to $80,000 when we include labor and additional items that would take. when we include labor and additional items that would take place. It requires, and I always get the date wrong, Tricia helped me, it's a forty-five days advance notice. So we would have to put a notice in our newspaper of choice, which is the Ethical Journal, at least forty-five days in advance. So by the time we had things set up and voted, we're talking about that person wouldn't be elected until probably sixty days. If that's, if that's, we made a decision this evening.
Right.
Uh, the difference between a special election is the person would fill out the remainder of the seats. So that seat is up in twenty twenty-four, I wanna say, right? So it'd be a year and a half that the person will hold that position. If the board is to appoint someone, the position would end in May of twenty twenty-three. And our next election in May would also be electing four board members to finish out one of those seats for a single year before they came back up again to keep us on a three-board member election rotation. I hope any of that, I hope that made sense, I apologize.
And an appointee would, would, um, upon the election of someone else in May, the elected person would immediately take the seat.
If it wasn't the same person.
It wasn't the same.
That is accurate.
Well, I mean, if, if it wasn't, if it was the same person, then they would take the oath of office immediately to fulfill their new term.
And for folks, Lily had mentioned earlier today about the NISBA eclipse, which for all board members I recommend, and for, I don't know if other folks are able to get the eclipse, I would recommend them. This is something that's happening across the state. Various school districts are in a similar position and trying to decide what to do. Very few districts that I've seen have held a special election, but doesn't mean it hasn't happened. It has happened. But there's the sort of, for lack of a better word, I don't like this phrase and I apologize, but the cost benefit analysis of sixty thousand dollars or eighty thousand dollars is a project number that I'm comfortable with.
I think also, given the, for lack of a better word, messiness of the election, I don't know, I, I don't know who we could appoint just out of nowhere, because I, I don't feel like the number is, given everything, I mean, it speaks for itself. I wouldn't be comfortable appointing anyone based on who was voted for in the straight.
So, so the person that, that the board appoints does not have to be someone who ran in the last election? That has been, that traditionally, in the years that I've been on the board, we have done one of two things. We have either appointed the next highest vote getter or left the spot vacant. And that has, that has been, my, my understanding from past years when we have done this was that, that, that that person appointed then fills out the remainder of the term, but apparently that was not true. So you're talking about, and, and if we, and I agree with you about the messiness of the last election and, uh, the, the real fuzziness around numbers. I think that's, that is a significant, uh, point of dissatisfaction among the voters. I, so, I mean, I agree with you on that. I, I am personally not in favor of spending another couple months and close to a hundred thousand dollars on a special election. I have always been uncomfortable with the idea of eight people choosing someone to be on the board for even the greater part of the year who hasn't been voted for. I mean, that, that seems to me less desirable than handing a position to someone who did get votes. And we have, we have left the position vacant, I think, just as often as we've filled it.
Eldred, and then Jill.
I think one of the, odd of these here is that although we talk about it as three options, it's actually four. Vote, make it, appoint next man up, next person up, or appoint someone out, someone new. Right, those are the, actually the four options.
We have, we would, that is correct.
That's, that's all I want to say, just get that out there so people are clear what the choices are. My instinct is to use the opportunity to appoint someone who either has been with us in the trenches before, and we know that there's a lot of work out there that's not being covered now, that those people would be willing to do, or use the opportunity to get some new blood, as it were. Get, to take a look at appointing someone, a rising young superstar, for example, in the community that this year to really get their feet wet and learn, and then be prepared possibly to run again, uh, next spring. At some point, it's gonna be time for us to go away. And this is complicated work, and I'd love to see that, to give some thought about that generational shift.
Jill, and then Moira.
Yeah, I, I find the reasons for not appointing anyone very compelling, the, the money. It gives us, if we don't do it, it gives us some time to get our act together regarding school board elections, which I think everyone agrees is necessary at this point. And we avoid, uh, possible intrafamilial conflict about who the person to appoint might be. So for those reasons, I would suggest we have a straw poll, because I suspect that we might all have our preferences already, and we could probably dispose of this pretty quickly. And, and I certainly am for leaving it, um, open.
But just a quick point of clarification to that point. No action would be required by the board to leave it vacant. There would not need to be a resolution. There would not need to be a motion.
Right, that's why I propose the straw poll, where we just, everybody's in agreement that we leave it open, then.
Or if there was five folks in there.
Exactly, yes.
If we were to, we'll leave it open and have a four-four tie, what happens?
That's a great question.
We have, we have a four-four.
And that would be the reason why the commissioner would require us to appoint a ninth board member.
If we couldn't work our way through it, which presented.
Moira, hello?
So I guess I'll just say, I, I agree with what Jill just said. And I, I agree with what Pat said about, you know, eight of us appointing someone. And if we did, we would have to have some kind of application for, you know, ask people to submit letters of interest and make their case. And I just don't think that's a, a, a particularly good use of our time or a, an action that I would be comfortable with. So I'm basically in favor of leaving it vacant in this regard. Because we've already, you know, gotten going here to some degree, you know? So by the time we appointed someone, um, you know, it would be a pretty brief term.
I can comment that if, um, if, if we could look back at, see of board members who stepped off or did not go on and agree on some names to, to, um, to put forth. I, I'm in favor of getting a ninth person.
I, I have, um, thought about other, you know, mechanisms that might seem more fair than, you know, us just picking someone. I, I, I'm a big, I'm a, I'm a person who doesn't, I'm, I'm historian by training, and I do a lot by, based on the past and what has worked and, and not worked. And, um, we have not really had a situation either with eight or nine people that quote, hasn't worked, but it's always been a lot more clear than, than, than this year. One of the things I had thought of was, honestly, because it's hard to step into a position like this and know that, okay, you're only gonna do this for seven or eight months, and there's a lot of training and there's a lot of knowledge, would be to say, oh, you know, okay, you know, past board members who are, you know, still here in the community, you know, write your names, put them in a hat, and we pick one at random. You know, that, that it's not favoritism and, you know, misuse of our power. I, I've thought of it. I don't think it's a great idea, but I think. But, but it is an idea. I thought about last year's election where there was no conflict over who was eligible and, and what the vote count was. And, um, you know, there is a former board member there who was, got three votes fewer than the person who stepped off the board. I have no idea whether that person would be interested or not. I, I have no idea. I have not asked. Those were other things I thought of. I'm not wedded to anything. I, I, I don't, I don't wanna spend money on an election and I, I would not support just, you know, the eight of us picking and choosing without some kind of electoral process.
So to keep our conversation moving forward, it sounds like, at least what I'm hearing, and please correct and from wrong, that at this point in time, no one is in favor of a special election. Or I have not heard anyone express interest in a special election. So then we're talking about one of two possibilities. Either void of, or appointment for a ninth member, and that has happened throughout the state in a host of ways. Next, next person in line in terms of votes, previous board members, interview process, a community interview process. There's been a host of things that have taken place that I've seen. And I was a member of the board in two thousand ten when the board did interview potential candidates and select somebody to be appointed at that point in time and or to leave the spot vacant. So if we're talking about vacancy or appointment or an eight-member board or a nine-member board for the upcoming year, let's see if we can try to bring some conclusion. And maybe it is a straw poll, as Jill has suggested, or should be the best way forward to we can come to some sort of resolution. And I would dare say, just as a point of clarification, if we decided that we were gonna consider an appointment, we would not have to make that appointment this evening. We would just put ourselves in the process to just make that happen. So I don't want people to feel like we have to do that, like we don't have to do both of them at the same time. So we can make sure that we're in making this.
What, what if we did a show of hands to see if people, like, we just said now, who's okay with vacant? If it's a majority, then, I mean, is that a possibility tonight?
Yeah, I wouldn't ask one question while asking the other, because I think there may be some people here who would be fine with either position. So I'm not sure that gets us to where we need to get at. I hope that makes sense, right? Like, um, I understand the concerns about appointing somebody in terms of what that looks like in the democratic process. I also know there is a lot of work, and we are down a board member. I also understand the value of leaving the seat vacant. Having done that before and worked within the eight-member board in previous years, it does help, uh, it has helped us get a better understanding of how we work together in the past. So both options are extremely viable to me.
Could I just say, having respond, having listened to your description of different ways to recruit a board member or to choose a board member, is, I personally can't take on any more than we are doing now. And to launch a process to satisfy all ideas of fairness that would be way harder than a special election, I, I don't have the bandwidth. I don't have it.
That's honest, that, that's true.
No, and I appreciate that, because that was my thoughts. Being seriously conflicted with this, how do we do this in a clean manner? Really, the question I have at night, as far as appointing another board member, appointing a board member, a board president, that.
And, and what, what if we could, what if we were split on who to appoint? Then we've wasted all that time.
Yes.
Yeah, it is.
And it would be a shame, yeah. And, yeah, it's.
Well, I'm open to recommendations of how best to phrase the question, right? So, I mean, one way to phrase it is, who would be okay with leaving it vacant? It's much different than, are we making, you know, what is your, is your preference to leave the seat vacant? And so I, I'm open to the recommendation of how we should phrase the question.
I think we should phrase it as a, as a forced choice. And then if someone abstains, you know, if, if four people abstain, then we know that, uh.
Can you tell me what a forced choice is?
A forced choice would be, do you want either to appoint someone through whatever method or to leave the seat vacant? What is your preference tonight, at this point in time?
Is that the will of the board to move forward? I'm just trying to.
Yes.
So Jill, I, I, I don't do this as board president. Go ahead and, this is a straw poll, right?
Yeah, yeah, okay. Let's have a, a show of hands for people who at this point in time would prefer to appoint a ninth member to the board through some means. What's your preference at this point in time is a point we have one, we have two. People who at this point in time would prefer to leave a position vacant and go forward with an eight-member board, leave a hand. One, two, three, four, people who are abstaining, two.
So Eldred, we know who the six are taking on the extra work.
Thank you, Karen. So I heard somebody to my right talking about a bandwidth.
Well, that indicates to me, it's not a, it's not a majority, but it does indicate to me a direction that we're going. And Karen, with a great humility, as I heard Eldred say, I'm not giving any more than twenty-five hours a week that I've already given to the school board, but I understand what that means by not taking on another board member as well. So this is an issue that at any point in time can be revisited, right? So it's not like we, since we're not making a, a motion or making a vote, it's not like we couldn't revisit it again if we felt like that was the need. But it seems like the, the will of the majority of the board at this point in time would be to proceed leaving the seat vacant, and we can continue conversation should we choose to do so. Is that an acceptable, I, I don't wanna phrase it that way. I don't know how best to phrase it. That's the way I think it is.
That was, that was.
Yeah, you said it. Does that work? Fantastic. Then that closes that discussion for the time being of that item. There are any other discussion items that the board must be aware of from our board colleagues? Things that we should know about, things we wanna address?
I think I would like to, um, and maybe now is not the time, maybe next Tuesday's the time, but I think we need to talk about the Legislative Advocacy Committee and how to move forward.
Uh, that, sorry, Erin, my apologies.
No, no, go ahead.
Nope.
I mean, is that something we are planning to talk about next Tuesday? Or is that something we want to do in a, in this setting?
Uh, I think that is definitely a conversation for, um, public setting. We also need to have a conversation about whether or not we're gonna continue the Capital Reserve Community Advisory Council. We also need to have a conversation, and we got, received, I believe I can share this. Moira, Eldred, and I received a message from Anne Reichlin, who was, um, responsible, partially responsible, her and Eldred responsible for the Early Childhood Advocacy Committee as well. And Anne would like to present the work that they did in a presentation, which we also asked for to get additional information. So I guess what I can say is that our next board meeting, we can put those as agenda items to try to bring some finality to them and not keep pushing them down to another board meeting. So that works, that, that would, that would not be until September thirteenth.
Since she just brought up that extra work and you brought that up, I wanna change my vote.
Yeah, if, if I, I was going to make this comment just as kind of an ending to the last conversation, but it fits into here. For, um, for our new board members, um, and acknowledgement to our present board members, we are unusually involved for hands-on. We have a lot of committees. I, I think we have more committees than any of the other, uh, school boards around here. And, um, Dr. Brown and the exec team are very gracious of, I mean, of, of listening and sharing and spending a lot of time at our committee meetings. Just, you know, keeping. keeping us informed and keeping us in the loop and keeping us active. But it is a, a lot of hours.
It is. And our community would not let us do much less.
But to piggyback on that, you know, outside of committees, I have three standing invitations to be at functions um, this week alone, outside of committee meetings and then, you know, ongoing committee work that happened pre-meeting.
So here's the way in which we're gonna address this. On uh Tuesday, August thirtieth, there'll be a board development session. The number one topic will be about the amount of expectations, addressing some of the questions we've had before. So that's gonna be a dialogue conversation about what we can expect. So it's for all board members or development session. Uh, we'll follow up with an agenda and the location uh later on this evening. On Wednesday, August thirty-first, there will be a full voting meeting that will be virtual only, virtual only with a single agenda item, which will be the personnel report. On September sixth, there'll be Policy Committee at five o'clock, a special voting meeting at six fifteen, which will be hybrid, and then HR Committee at six thirty. And then we will not be together as a full board again in person, bless you, until September thirteenth, which is our next full board voting meeting, regularly scheduled. I will keep and other folks will keep our community and our board members aware if the governor extends a state of emergency, we'll make sure folks know as soon as possible because it will have an impact on how we post our meetings. For the time being, our meetings will be hybrid, but we'll follow up or Tricia to make sure we have the resources to make sure that this is as clear as we possibly can moving forward. We ask for patience from our community folks as we get this and we'll try to get the information out as soon as we possibly can so everyone is aware of what's taking place.
Professor, may I add one other date for the board calendar only?
A complication, I apologize, please.
Complication, uh, we'll welcome all staff on August thirtieth at twelve thirty at, at Ethical High School. Location will be determined by the weather.
And.
All board members.
August thirtieth.
August thirtieth, yes. Tuesday at twelve thirty.
At what time? Okay.
Twelve thirty to one thirty.
Twelve thirty to one thirty. Come, come eat lunch with us, please.
Yes, and we'll make sure we send that out. And I know there's a flyer already going out to our, our staff as well. Well, if that's it, good folks, then uh, as I say to my students, run free and frolic. Have fun.